So this is a recording of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, October 11th. And I am Ben Blair.
Michael McMahon.
Cindy Warner.
Tammy Sack.
Jen Donovan.
And I don't know if Tracy can unmute, but there's, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna say your name wrong. I know I've asked you a million times, Tracy Meswore on Zoom is with us here tonight. Okay. So it looks like we have no public comments. There's nobody waiting in the Zoom room. September minutes, I don't remember who took them and I don't. I don't know who took them. I don't know if you have them with you or it was, I don't think that was Tracy. Tracy wasn't here last month.
I didn't remember.
Yeah, it wasn't here last month. It was me.
No, I remember who did it offhand. Okay, um, well, I guess if, if nobody did it, I can, I can try to find some time and go back and transcribe them from, from last month's meeting recording unless anybody's willing to do that and save me some time, but. You've got it, Tammy? Okay, I'm gonna make a note and I'll send you. The. Thank you. Okay, so that means our September minutes will be tabled until our November meeting. Okay, so as far as the, oh, I skipped past communications. That's just because I don't really have any, any communications this month. Everything I was gonna talk about was down at the old business or new business. So September statistics. And September was another pretty solid month. I mean, still over 400 circulation. Thank you. We had 20 new cards, which was still really great. So it's come down a little bit after the summer months, which it always tends to do. But overall, still, still very successful, I'd say.
I don't remember if I asked this in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Do we track the online, the digital?
Digital.
Check out.
Digital books? Yeah, we tend to, I tend to pull those together every year for the annual report. I don't go through and put it in here. Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, no, I, I tend to, I mean, I can, if you guys wanna see those statistics, I can definitely add them. If it's helpful, but um, no, and in the past, we have it, but that's, you know, that's something that we could change if we wanna do that. And I apologize to Tracy. I didn't have time to get everything digitally ready for this meeting, so. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
We're still getting a little bit of curbside.
Just a little bit of curbside pickup. I mean, I, I'm, even though the numbers are negligible, I'll continue to track it to see if they uptick again this winter. Um, it's, I mean, it's still. It's still another good way to show, you know. How useful it is. So I mean, who knows what this winter will bring? And I mean, I think it was still pretty slow last winter, but. So I may just track it till the end of next, or the end of this fiscal year and then all of the day, but.
Has Overdrive? Or moved into Libby?
Yeah, so Overdrive, I, I can't remember the official date. They're, they're shutting down Overdrive. I, I wanna say it's in January, but don't quote me. Um, they're trying to make everything move over to Libby as kind of their new central app. So Overdrive will cease to exist at some point in the near future. But I think, I think most people have kind of already made the jump over to Libby anyway, because they keep that.
I never use any of the stuff, but Pat had mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Something about Overdrive.
Yeah, yep, so that'll, that'll be obsolete at some point, some point soon. But Libby, Libby, I think it's kind of, it's nicer to use anyway, so I think it'll be a good change. Everybody good? Great, okay. Um, so moving on to old business. So we had our first strategic plan meeting in September. Went very well and then starting. Yesterday, we had a survey available. And it'll be, I shifted it back a little bit. Originally, I was just gonna do it for the whole month of October, but I shifted it back because. There's, people wanted to hand it out at the town elections, so to make that November 8th deadline, I just made it October 10th to November 10th, so we could kind of. Make sure. So I have three people so far who are doing a couple hour shifts the morning of the election. So that they can hand out, I made posters. We have these little pamphlets with the QR code on it. So that's on our website, Facebook page, and we have paper copies here. I've got paper copies at the Town Hall, Senior Center, Southwood Village, Food Pantry. And I've put up posters around town, so hopefully we'll get a, a good, good response.
And you also had it in Westfield, no?
I did. I sent a press release in, so I'm glad they published it.
They did, cuz I remember reading.
Yeah, so I sent a press release into them, so I'm glad that they, they got that published. So, I mean, I think we've pretty much canvassed everybody. I'll do some extra Facebook posts throughout the month and hopefully get some more. And we will go from there. Um, we're meeting again in November to discuss the survey results and come up with a. Vision statement and goals and all that fun stuff. And then. They're a very good group. I'm very, I'm very surprised and very relieved. Sometimes with those groups, you get. You know, people wanna come, but then they're just, they're quiet and they're too afraid to say anything. This group is not afraid to say things, which is nice. Everybody's got some really good opinions and feedback, so I think it went really well. Um, the next meeting should hopefully be just as good and.
And you got schools involved.
Yeah, Erin, Erin Carrier from the schools came, and that was great to have her perspective as well. So we have somebody from the schools. I was gonna.
Her preparation, she's a paramount.
Yes, yep, yep. Um, she was really great. Um, Cindy Sullivan from the Senior Center was gonna come, but she wasn't able to make it, so hopefully she'll be able to make it next time. We have some trustees, we have some friends, we have some patrons, so I think we've got a pretty good, pretty good mix of everybody. So we'll meet again in November and then I'll spend December, January, however long, kind of, putting everything together and writing it. And then bring it to you guys for the final approval. Um, so next, I, I still have the emergency planning and training update on here. I have not heard anything else from town. I know Mike, Michael, you said you, you may, if you have a chance, we're gonna ask somebody. I didn't know.
Yeah, I, I haven't been able to.
That's okay. No, I just wanted to put it on there just to, to see if there was anything new. I'll check again. Maybe in November and then just see if there's any updates that we can provide. Cuz I know it's something that's still on a lot of people's minds. We did books transportation. I have that on there because I was going to, I'm still waiting for a response as we discussed from the town, just to make sure that I could get reimbursed for driving to Agawam periodically. Still waiting for a response on whether that's something that I could get reimbursed for, so. Um, we're breezing through this, the new policy animals in the library. I still am waiting for, that one had to go to the town council to review. Still.
What, what's the issue?
Well, somebody was bringing in, we don't have any policies on people bringing in animals. And somebody was bringing in an animal that probably, probably was not the friendliest animal, probably should not be in, you know, a public place where there's children running around. So we decided that we would need to have a policy so that there's something in place, you know.
So is it some kind of dog?
Yeah, I guess it was a dog, yep. So it does have to go through town council because we wanna make sure that everything is clearly worded and that, you know, everything.
You're meeting ADA.
ADA requirements and things like that. You know, we wanna make sure that we're following that. But also, you know, if an animal is just a pet, maybe this isn't the best place for it to come in. So we're, I still have that under old business because I'm hoping that. That they can review our policy and get back to us. I will check in again to see if it's. Something we can get on the table for next one.
Cuz it's just, I understand the person that's deciding.
Oh, yeah, of course.
But the flip side is, what about the little kid or the person who's. I won't say terrified, but scared of.
This wasn't a therapy.
No, this, this was not any, any, any therapy dog or service animal. It was just a pup pet. Yeah. Yep, so, so service animals, therapy, well, service animals, any kind of assistant animal is kind of its own category. This is more just something for. You know, that you can't bring your pet in here. You can't also tie it up outside and then come inside, because who knows what it's doing out there while you're in here type of situation, so. We'll get something written up on that and hopefully, hopefully by next month, I'll have a response so that we can have an actual policy written down. Um, also, under old business, we have finally submitted. The ERIS, which is the state report for all of our statistics on circulation and whatnot. That was submitted a couple weeks ago.
Is it ERIS?
Uh, A, A R I S, yep. And then just last Friday, we submitted the financial report to the state, which details all of our expenses throughout the year. So big milestone for the year. Both of those huge reports are now submitted. And we're on to the next thing. Also, under old business, because we didn't get to discuss last month, um, the November meeting falls on Election Day, so I don't know if we wanted to. Well, we're, we have to obviously move it. We can't have it on Election Day. But somebody also told me that there is a town meeting on November 15th.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know what you wanted to do for next month. And when we wanted to meet.
Couldn't you move it to the day after elections?
The day after elections? Well, that's, that we are, we determine is gonna be the next strategic planning meeting, so, I mean, unless, unless we meet earlier. Although I can't guarantee that I will be functional after two meetings in a row. So I mean. And I think the 22nd is probably too close to Thanksgiving for anybody to. I mean, we could do the first. I don't, I mean, and I don't know if, you know. Sorry, Tracy. I don't know if you unmuted to say something. Nope, okay. Um, I mean, I don't know what's, I don't have anything. That I can predict that's pressing for next month, so I mean, I don't know if. I don't know how many meetings are we technically allowed to skip, cuz we skipped one in the summer.
We, typically, we don't have a meeting in July or August.
Okay, so I mean, if, if we wanted to, I don't, I don't foresee any huge things that need to be voted on for November. I mean, the only big thing that I'm working on for November is just the update to our action plan, which I have to do every year. But that I can submit just, just myself and then give you guys an update afterwards.
If we had our meeting on Election Day, would that interfere with anyone being able to vote?
Well, I mean, technically, even if, even if it doesn't interfere, yeah, the town clerk really doesn't like it. Yeah, I think, I think she said it's, it's not recommended, so we.
Read that in a different way.
Understood.
Thursday, where we would do it Tuesday, how about the Thursday?
Well, Thursday, we close at five, so that, that would be.
Yeah.
Couldn't do it during hours, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, November's kind of tricky. I mean, we could do it the Tuesday before, but that's also kind of soon, so. Like I said, I don't have any, I, I can't predict any big major things.
When is Thanksgiving this year?
Yeah, 24th, yep, yep, so I mean.
What about the 16th? So we could just go over what happened the last, the next strategic plan we did.
Say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sorry, we're meeting the ninth for the next strategic.
And then, well, we're meeting, we're meeting the 16th for the strategic, yeah, 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 that, that was the day that worked best for everybody.
Couldn't meet on the ninth? I mean, it's supposed to be what, the eighth?
I think, well, the, the Friends technically meet. Um, I mean, we could meet after the Friends.
My opinion is let's skip it. It's getting way too complicated. I don't know about anybody else.
Really hard about this.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, unless something like.
If we've only missed one. Meeting, it would usually take July longer staff anyways.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess if like some, some big huge pressing thing comes, we can always schedule like an emergency meeting or something and then. But like I said, I don't foresee anything, but. So I guess if that's good, then we will, we will skip November and our next meeting would be December 13th.
Now, so you attend the Friends meeting as well?
Yep, yep, I, all the meetings. Yeah, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not, the Friends meet 5:30 to 6:30. I mean, I'm not opposed to having two meetings in a night.
Have to be physically here?
Yes, it is. They want us to do hybrid now, so technically, since I am the puppeteer for all of this, I would have to technically be here. Okay, perfect. And if, like I said, if anything, emergency comes up, we can always do a, an emergency brief meeting and, but I don't, I don't see anything. All right. Stuff, holiday closings. I wanted to ask you guys about. The holiday closings, because this year it's a little bit convoluted. So. What throws me through a loop every year is what day the holidays fall on. So technically. Thank you. Christmas and New Year's fall on a Sunday, so we'd be, obviously, we'd be closed the 25th and January 1st. So that would mean for our full-time staff, anytime.
Monday.
Yeah, it would be on the Monday, so we would be closed also December 26th and January 2nd. However, where it gets weird, and this is what I gave you, is a copy from the employee handbook. The union handbook is, is pretty much the same wording, so this will give you the gist of what we're looking at. What I'm wondering about is, is New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve. Because as it says here, the holiday begins at 12 noon. Well, it would have fallen on a Saturday. We're only open 10 to 1. So, I mean, to open for two hours.
I see, no.
No, I mean, see, but then the town hall is closed those days, so I usually, I try to do what the town hall does to avoid confusion, but they're closed those days, so.
Town hall, they've got that floating half-day for Christmas and half-days.
That's, yeah.
The union usually says, we'll take the, I don't know what they've done this year, usually at Christmas. And they put the whole eight hours on that Friday.
Yeah, so that's, that's the other problem, is because technically, Christmas and Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, starting at 12 noon, is a paid holiday. But our full-time staff don't work on Saturdays. So what I was going to do was I was gonna take those each half-days. Mush it into one day and then I was gonna give staff, you know, so that the union has a vote. We could either be closed Friday, December 23rd, or potentially. Tuesday, the 27th.
I say go the 23rd.
Yeah, well, I figured, I figured it's probably a good idea.
Have kids on vacation.
Yeah, I mean, I figure it's probably a good idea to let the union have a vote on that, because it sounds like what, that's what the town hall does.
That's what town hall generally does, I have.
So I was gonna put it around to the union staff and see what they thought and which one that they would prefer to have off. So. Then the question is. If, and I'm, I'm, I hate to assume, but I'm assuming most people would probably want December 23rd off. So if we were to close December 23rd. It wouldn't make sense to be open December 24th, but that's also a lot of day, our part-time staff don't get paid for closed holidays. So what I was going to do is just see if, you know, I can, I can drum up some extra projects. We always have background stuff that needs doing and like. Either that week or the week after, if people want some extra hours to kind of make up for that lost time. Then, then I think that's fair, because that's a lot of time for people to lose when we're closed, so. I mean, if that, if that sounds like a reasonable.
That, that's generally what's been done in the past.
Yeah, okay, okay, then I will, I will, so, so nothing's really set in stone yet. I mean, until, I'll put it around and see if they want the 23rd or the 27th. So that way, everybody has a say in which day they prefer and we'll go with what the majority wants. And then we can also give people some time to make up some, some extra, because we do have money in the budget and we do have projects that need doing, so we can probably do a. And it's generally incredibly quiet that time of year anyways, so we can get a lot of.
And so then for New Year's, they would get the second up?
Yeah, so, so the holiday falls on a Sunday, so we would be closed the second. Yeah. So, so what, essentially what it looks like is we'd be closed December 25th, well, technically, December 24th, 25th, 26th. January 1st and January 2nd, and then either December 23rd or December 27th. So I'll just, I'll put something around to the staff tomorrow and see which day they prefer and we can go from there. Great, perfect.
Thank you for thinking of your part-time staff.
It's a lot of time to lose, especially around the holidays. It's, it's rough and it's gonna be, it's gonna be such a rough winter for this year for people, so. Um, okay, and then the last thing I have on here is. I'm going to start thinking about the fiscal 2024 budget. That's usually due in June. I feel like last year it was due in February. Yeah, so it's either January or February. Um, so I'm gonna go back, gonna go back through and. I think we, we held off on our new telephone system, because I feel like that's something that should really be in the municipal budget. Because we already pay for our computers through our state aid account. And I'm, I'm in the process of updating our computer replacement schedule, cuz some of ours are like almost 10 years old and need updating, so we.
Replaced every five or six years.
Yeah, yep, yep, so we're working on that right now. I did replace some last year, but I've just been kind of doing them in chunks of like three or four. They're really, really old ones, so now we're gonna get back on schedule with that. So, I mean, we spend a pretty good chunk of the money from the state on computers. Which town doesn't pay for our public computers? So I feel like. They should pay for our telephone upgrades, because we have to pay for our computers out of, out of our state aid account. So I'm going to work on, I have the quotes that they gave us to upgrade our phone system, and this was when we originally talked about it, April or March of this year.
You, you needed updated numbers.
Exactly, so I have all the numbers that they gave me in April and March, and I'm going to go back through and check in with everybody, probably next month. To just get updated numbers so that we can have them for January.
And whatever number they give you, the reality will be at least five or 10% more by the time you buy them next, next July.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I completely missed all of that, cuz I was writing down calendar dates.
Oh, yes, no worries. Yeah, so, so what, what I was saying was that I'm going to. We got a quote to upgrade our telephone system in March slash April. And then we decided to table it until the budget season, because I feel it, it's something that really should come from the municipal budget. So that, I'm gonna get some new quotes now, so that we can work it into our budget for January, February. I think we're looking at like, from what they told me before, it's probably gonna be a couple thousand dollars. Um, unless prices have gone up, you know, I don't, I can't say for sure.
Have you worked it? The mass schedule, you know, like the state of Massachusetts has prices with various vendors. And something Carl had said two or three years ago, is we can actually, being municipality, we can actually get in on GSA pricing.
Yep.
Which is federal government.
Yep, yep, so I'm gonna go through and hopefully get some new numbers over the course of next month, so at least have, we'll have an idea. And then be able to build that into our budget proposal for fiscal year 2024. At least, if going by the numbers they gave me last year, it's like I said, it looks like it's gonna be a couple thousand. Maybe more if things have changed that drastically. But then I guess it also, and then it depends on which, which budget line we would want to put it into. I mean. The maintenance line is for the maintenance department. We have one that's called small equipment. I don't know if the telephones would fall under that or.
I'm thinking about utilities, telephone.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have a telephone line for our actual.
Right.
So, I mean, we could build it into that line. It's like a.
Maybe, either that or a capitalized one down at the bottom, which is. And where if you look at prior years, it was carpeting, it was painting.
Would this count as a capital expense?
I don't think so.
Yeah, no.
It's like one year when we put in for wifi, we went to the budget hearings and they said, how much does this cost? And we said, two or three hundred, they said. Just spend it now, go ahead and don't, we won't put this into a capital item. And as it turned out, it was like 120 bucks.
Yes, okay, yeah, so I will, I will work on getting some new numbers so that we can build that into the budget and then I guess we can just build it into the telephone line with our regular telephone.
One thing I was kind of amazed at, when I was signing off on the, the last state reports. Is our heating bill today. Is still about the same as it was 10 years ago. It used to be $18,400 per year, up until 10 or 12 years ago. Then, when we did the insulation project. It dropped down to like 6,400 or 6,800, and that's what it was this past year. Holy smoke, that insulation has really saved us a fortune.
Yeah.
And it's every year, it's not just for a year or two.
Yeah, so I will build that into next year. The only, and the only other thing I was going to mention is. Next year, we did last year ask for a part-time 12 hours, I think it was 12 hours a week, um, part-time evening position that we did not get. So I think. I don't see anything wrong with asking for something again this year.
It's one of those supplemental pages, pages two or three or whatever.
I'm trying to figure out, you know, the best, the best thing. I mean, ideally. In a perfect world, what we could really use is somebody that could be like a head of the circulation department. And manage the circulation staff, because you know, right now, myself and the assistant director are kind of doing that role on top of everything else. So if we had somebody kind of be a. Supervisory role.
But you'd still want some more hours for somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking like we, when we had.
Or you take the circ person and make them 37 instead of 18.
That's, that's what I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know which we'd have better luck doing. I mean, we could potentially, they, see if we could make the circ full-time position. But are they gonna give us five? That would make us have five full-time positions. I mean, I don't.
Well, it could be that.
I'd say ask big and then work your way back.
Yeah.
If you ask for 12, they're not gonna make something full-time and include benefits and all of that. But if you ask for that, then they may say, well, what if we gave you part-time?
Yeah, yeah, so maybe, so maybe we, cuz we have four circulation positions, so maybe we could. See if we can make three part-time and one full-time circulation and have that be a head of circulation to somebody who can kind of. Manage all of the day-to-day stuff and potentially work in the evening, so that we have that kind of.
By being 37 and a half hours instead of 18 hours, they could provide more coverage.
What I was thinking was, you know, myself and the assistant director are always here in the morning, so we can be supervisory in the morning, but if they're here. Afternoon into the evening, then there's that whole chunk that's covered. Which would be wonderful, so, I mean, I, I'm gonna um, kind of start building our case for that. I think that might be the, the ideal route to go.
And part of it's the door numbers and that kind of stuff.
Oh, of course.
We have people coming through the door.
And I mean, our statistics are higher than, we haven't dipped under 4,000 in, however long. Um, and I can also, I'll pull together statistics from other libraries as well as to, you know, how they shape their departments, how many full-time staff they have compared to. Other libraries our size, so.
Is it the cost of living? Is this the cost of living, that is, doing a contract rather than changing in January or next July?
They, their contract for their raises is every end of the fiscal year, so July 1st, there, that's when their raises happen.
And they are above minimum, because I know minimum wage keeps changing every year.
Minimum are, technically, our circulation staff right now are at 15.05 an hour.
Okay.
Which is, I think minimum wage is still 15, or is it, it hasn't reached 14, 14, 25, yeah. So it's, I mean, it's still a little above.
I just want to make sure, just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, so, yeah, so what I'll do is I'll start putting together numbers to try to build a case, and and also, you know, I guess there's also the question of what happens if none of our current circulation positions want to be made into full-time? And what would happen, because we still have four. I guess that's a question to, to ponder for another day, but. So, yeah, I will start putting together numbers and comparing us to other libraries and seeing, seeing where we're at. And I guess, like, if you guys support us in asking big, then we'll ask big and negotiate.
And then part-time is your fallback position.
What was that saying?
And then, part-time is your fallback position.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect.
If you don't ask, you never get.
I know, I, maybe that was my fault, and last year, thinking, I was like, I'm going to ask reasonable.
Well, last year was still kind of.
Well, last year, yeah, I was trying to be kind of reasonable with, you know, the state of the budget and everything.
There's certain departments on Depot Street. We need a ship, they have a ship, we need a ship. We need two more people, we need three more vehicles. Oh, we need a $500,000 pump truck or something.
Kind of like if you get the Amazon catalog and give it to your kids, they're going to circle all the things they want, she'll only have to buy three.
They'll forget the rest. Okay, perfect, so, so I will do that, I will work on putting together some numbers for the December meeting. And then it will at least have that, so we can kind of look at where we are. All right, and then that, that is it, that is it for me.
Motion to adjourn.
Tammy's ready. So that was a motion to adjourn from Tammy.
Backed it.
All votes in favor?
Aye.